... It's straight over. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, for the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just the place?
I know. That's all we missed.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting of April 20th, 2023?
Move.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay. Under citizens' comments, we're going to lead off with the school, and Joe DeBarbury, and Dean.
There we go. Thank you very much for having us this evening. So with me, we have Dr. Kathleen Davis, our acting superintendent, Kim Viall, our assistant superintendent for management services. We also have two board members here, Sam Trayvon and Wayne Davidson.
Oh, we know them.
And we have a staff member from the Baspa Association, Helen Challett. And I think Pat's speech is also here, so some representatives.
She is our president of the Baspa unit. So, her. Thanks.
So we're excited to just go through our budget. We have a formal budget presentation scheduled for next Monday, May 8th, at 6:00 PM at the Transportation Center, our new transportation center. That public hearing will also give an opportunity for the citizens of this community to meet our seven Board of Education candidates. And then we'll go into a more detailed presentation. What we have for you this evening is just a quick overview, and we really want it to serve as an opportunity for you to ask questions of us if you have questions or if you're hearing things within the community. I know the last two meetings, there was discussion, and during the public comment, I had a chance to watch, and also speak to some of those citizens that spoke about the capital project. So I'll give you a little bit more information regarding that, and certainly I've been in conversation with Mayor Clark as well. So our budget is budget vote, May 16th, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the District Operations Building, which is right on the main campus, same location as last year. We are proposing a $129 million budget, which represents a 2.85% increase in the tax levy. And most of the increase is really through the addition of an increase in foundation aid that we received as a district. We are required to report out our budget in three categories, the program, the administrative, and the capital component. The program component makes up just around 87% of the overall budget, and that is important because it's about our students. And so the program component covers any position, equipment, material supplies, contract that relates to students in some way. So when you think about our athletic program, fine arts, technology, transportation, instruction, it's all covered within that program component. The administrative component is around $11 million out of the total budget. That covers the Board of Education, central administration, the principals, and directors. This year, it shows that the dollar amount is obviously increasing, but we want to point out, and you'll see this in our budget newsletter that was distributed to the community, that there's an increase in that area. And we want to highlight that because it's not that we're adding additional administrators. That's not the case at all. We were required to re-code or re-categorize some of our spending expenditures that were coming from the instructional budget, the program component, mainly technologies. We made some shift with some technology, and then also professional development and staff development. All of our learning coaches, which is an instructional position, are categorized now under the administrative component. So we want that to be clear. We're not adding additional administrators. Our staffing is staying the same. The capital component, just under $17 million. Another portion where we have a shift because of some of our debt service going up. That debt service is related to leases and technology equipment. We leased many of our pieces through OC and OCS, and so we were forced to re-categorize based on that. So overall, we're really excited. The highlights, all of our positions are maintained from our current budget for 22, '23 school year. We are adding a special education teacher at the junior high school, a special education learning coach, and an active physical education teacher, and English is a new language teacher to support our students who, English is not their first language. We've seen an increase in the number of students moving into the district, so that is necessary. It's all based on student need. And then we are also embedding in all of the positions that have been covered currently under the American Rescue Fund planning, the federal funds that we've received. So we have our school counselors, our social workers, our learning coaches, our RTI, Response to Intervention, teachers. They have been supported along with our school resource officers, and we thank the village for the partnership. And adding additional SRPOs in our elementary schools this current school year, those now will be funded under our general fund. So we're excited about that, and we were only able to do that because of the increase in the foundation aid that we received. So again, we thank the village for that partnership. So overall, we're happy that the $129 million budget focuses on our students, and that's what it's about, and that's what we're excited to share with our school community. Our second proposition is for 14 student transportation vehicles. We have been in this cycle. We have a 10-year replacement plan for our vehicles. And so every year, you see, as you go to the polls, that we have transportation vehicles on the ballot. And this year, we're looking at spending a maximum cost of $2.2 million for 14 vehicles. And this is an area that we want to highlight, highly aided. So when you look at the overall cost that is impacted on our budget, over a local share over three years, we're looking at about an $83,000 purchase, correct them, to the taxpayers. So when you think about that over that, you know, we're talking $30-ish thousand, $40,000, depending on how many years and how many vehicles are purchased, where there's an impact on that year for the purchase of those buses. Proposition three, which you've heard most recently about through the public comments, is the capital project. We've done a lot of work this year in trying to get out videos, so if you go on our website, www.vivo.org, we've blasted throughout our school community promotional videos with our coaches, our students, our teachers, our administrators, really highlighting various components of our capital project as well as the budget. And I know there was a lot of questions regarding the proposed entry on the main campus for traffic flow and additional parking, and we are just putting that out there. This is conceptual in nature. We needed an idea of how much that would cost so that, you know, if and when, hopefully, this project is approved, we can move forward with our next steps, which is really working more closely with all of the engineers, our landscape architects, continuing conversations with the folks in the village, the police department, the Department of Transportation, and the homeowners that border our main campus. We can't do that work before we really have the authorization by the public because there's a significant cost to that. But we have been having pretty positive conversations with our school community about the concerns that have been brought forward, and I can assure you that we are all committed to making sure that, you know, there's continued dialogue moving forward when the project is approved. And before we finalize anything, there will be more communication so that we know that, you know, everyone is as happy as best they can be with the final product. But we're also excited about that project beyond the parent drop-off location. It's the additional field renovations with the all-weather turf for baseball, softball, and multi-purpose field for our marching band in our fall and spring athletics. So that is, you know, when you think about students having access, again, another area where we're bringing together part of our long-range plan, the vision of making sure all of our varsity athletics, JV athletics are on our main campus. And so we're excited about the potential for the field turf. Also renovations to the high school with a gymnasium and the pool. That pool, I think in my conversations with Mayor Clark, he was probably one of the first students to swim in that pool, and it's obviously been there for quite some time, and it needs some renovation. Not to put him on the spot, but, you know, that is important for us, and we've been fortunate enough to work with our architects to come up with a plan to get the most aid on doing that project. It's actually considered a renovation because we're moving it within the space of that building, it'll actually be in the small gymnasium that currently exists at the high school. And so it's a way to expand and not expand our footprint, but expand our pool within our current pipeline. We also have renovations to science classrooms, much of the work that was approved last year with a budget in the capital project for Derby Junior High School, enhancements to our, what I would consider to be our scheme, our science, technology, engineering, mathematics art classrooms. The Baker project is being proposed, has renovations to all of the science suite. And much of the space that currently exists there is original to the building with a few minor tweaks here and there. So we're excited about the state-of-the-art, project-based, flexible space that will be created through the renovations of the science wing. The other part that, not focusing on the high school, but if we shift gears to Ray Middle School, there, this project includes work at Ray with the encore area of the building, our, again, our science, our technology, our math, or our music, our arts. This space allows us to renovate and create three separate ensemble rooms for our fine arts, our orchestra, our instrumental, and our vocal music classrooms. And again, the work there is similar to the work that's been done at Derby. So we're really trying to, you know, bring our facilities up to what we've considered to be 21st century learning spaces for our students and our staff, and we're excited about that. Are there questions on that project?
The only question I have is, when they do the entrance, if they can just talk to us, because we have two transmission mains that go right in that area.
Absolutely. At Baker.
At Baker, yes. Yeah, right off of Swigert Street. One goes down Long this time.
Kim is gonna make note of that, because she oversees that department. The, let's see here, the fourth proposition is the capital reserve. So I just want to make this clear too. So we are proposing another capital reserve. We are actually using $7.5 million out of our current reserve to fund this project that we have out there, the $63.9 million project. And we're able to do that because we have reserves. It lowers our local share of the project. And so what we're looking to do is to have voters authorize us to create another $10 million capital reserve. That does not mean we have $10 million right now to place into that capital reserve, but it allows us over the next however many years, as we generate some additional funding, that we can move that fund into the reserve to offset future costs. This work is really just ultimately a continuation of our long-range plan. We're putting together a committee right now to look at Phase Three, Four, and Five, which is in the planning stages. So we know that we have the need for additional capital reserve, and we hope that the voters will support us in that effort. And the final proposition that we have is the land acquisition over at Ray Middle School, right off Route 48, Maple Road. There's a home that is assessed at, I believe, $150,000. We're not purchasing it for $150,000. We're purchasing it for $44,000.
$44,000.
The building's not, it's not livable, it's not habitable at this point. It's, I believe, condemned. So we have the opportunity to purchase this property and then ultimately create another service entry, also a drop-off space potentially for our families at Ray. As you know, many of you probably drive down Van Buren Road either at the beginning of the day, or at the end of the day, or if there's large events going on, and it is a nightmare with traffic going in and out of that campus with staff, with buses. It becomes a safety issue. And so we're excited about the fact that if this goes through, we have the ability to create another entrance for our families. And the town, we spoke at the town of Van Buren a few weeks ago, and they were excited, and they've been supportive about helping make that transition. And to be quite honest with you, if you look at the house that's there, the homeowners, we've had conversations, it's not a house that you really want to stay there because it's not in a condition that makes your property look the way that you want it to look. So we certainly are hopeful that the community will approve that land acquisition, and then the work that's being done at Ray through that $63.9 million capital project will also allow us to do some renovations with that service entry. And then the final area of our budget is the board candidates. We have seven candidates running for four seats. Three of the seats are three-year terms, and then the fourth seat is for a one-year term. That's to fill a remaining seat held by a former board member. So I would open it up for any further questions. I know Kim and Dr. Davis are here, and can't thank our school board and community enough for all of the support and feedback we've received, and certainly want to answer any questions you have so that we get the right information out there instead of what you see on social media.
And I don't want to delay anything. I'm just, I enjoy numbers. So I'm hung up a little on the capital reserve here.
Yes.
What do we currently have as capital reserve?
So we actually have two that are currently existing. Kim's gonna come up because--
You're gonna draw seven? You've mentioned a number.
Yeah, we're gonna draw $7.5 million.
And I wanna raise 10. Oh, not to exceed 10.
Not to exceed 10.
To replace that seven and grow.
Right. So the way the capital reserves work is when we take it out to the voters, we have a 10-year life on that capital reserve, and we can only fund each reserve once up to that amount.
Okay, what's that mean? Probably term 10 years.
So at the end of, so if we have money in that reserve after 10 years, we would have to move it out of that reserve and either put it into another capital reserve or another reserve that is allowed based on the Office of General Services guidelines. So when you're talking about the reserves or your savings accounts, but they're specific for a specific reason, and they have all of these strings tied to them in regards to what you can and can't use them for, and how long they can be there.
We hear that from Mark Fred. The other option is you can spend it.
Right. So it's just, what it does really for us with the capital reserve is it helps reduce that local share. So the capital project we're going out with right now, it offsets the amount that we would have to raise taxes to cover the cost because the majority of that project is aidable, but what we talked about is that local share that's not aidable, and that either has to come from the taxpayers or from our savings accounts.
I think that's one of the most confusing parts of this for taxpayers to understand.
Absolutely. And then creating--
It's like, sounds like you want to build a $10 million slush fund over here.
Right. No, it really is there to help us. We know, obviously, we worked on Derby last year. We went out with that, oh, well, we haven't worked on yet, but we're still in the design phase. And we have a long-range infrastructure plan that we've been working on with the facilities committee, that we plan to start adopting at our reorganization, that actually lays all of the pieces out that impact our capital projects. So when we think about, we have debt right now, that debt comes off, we want to have new debt coming on to maintain the tax cap and the calculation that's a part of that. And then in addition to that, we're always looking at the aidability of a project as well and maximizing. There's a few other pieces behind the scenes in regards to how the state will provide aid to us. So that's another factor that we're building in to make sure as things reset every five years, every 10 years, we're maximizing that to the best of our ability in that plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Explaining that every chance you can this year.
Well, we actually, we've gotten better because we've got more questions, which is helpful. Again, I think people think that we have $10 million right now, and we can just throw in there, and we don't. So we think that's important to point out as well.
I draw as a Jamie all the time.
Yes.
I think if I can ask, do you have a plan for the building of that capital fund from zero to $10 million? It's not like $10 million's gonna go in there right after the vote.
Right.
It's something that takes place over time, and there's usually a plan that's, you know, a million this year.
So we also, in addition to the long-range infrastructure plan, we have a fund balance management plan that we review with our audit committee every June, and then we take that back for the board to be adopted in July. And what that does is it has all of our reserves in it. What we feel comfortable with having is a funding level, where we are with it, and if we need to reduce it or increase it based on what we know at that point in time. And then we review it during the year too, but we really make sure we focus on it at least once a year. One of the things we really want to make sure we're doing with the situation we're in for next year is planning for the future because, as Dr. DeBarbury mentioned, we have this foundation aid coming into us this year. The thing that is, is this is a foundation aid that we have been owed for a number of years. So we will never see this type of an increase again. So what we're doing is projecting out, what do we need to do to be financially stable into the future and setting ourselves up for that, which is why we built the budget like we did in regards to some of the things we're purchasing.
Which I didn't say.
And I'll turn this back over to him.
Trying to think of everything off our feet. So one of the pieces with what Kim mentioned, trying to build some one-time expenses, we have allocated approximately $1.3 million to the purchase of musical instruments for our beginning orchestra and band students. And we feel that's important because when you think about, as a district, we provide students with graphic calculators, with textbooks, with Chromebooks. Why aren't we, with athletic equipment, you know, uniforms, why aren't we doing the same for the performing arts? And so what we're looking to do at this one-time expense, that we can then use that funding to support salary increases in prior budgets, not knowing where our state aid will be, but by purchasing these instruments, we're gonna provide the opportunity for every student, if they so choose, at the grade three, four, and five level to have access to a musical instrument. And we feel it's important because we know that when students are connected to the fine arts or to some type of school-related opportunity, they perform better in school academically, and it's that connection that helps them, you know, socially, emotionally, tying to their learning. So we're excited about that, and that is something that will move forward with students as they pursue middle school, junior high school, and high school level music opportunities. And we will have instruments on hand for those students if they can afford it as well. But we see an increase in the number of students across our district that are identified as, you know, receiving free and reduced lunches, and so we think it's important. We want every kid to have that opportunity. And as Kim mentioned, it's a great way to kind of use that money now and not tie it to legacy costs and then use it next year for the contractual responsibilities that we have. Are there questions or concerns?
Joe, you may want to just mention that we're off the improvement list.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And another good note we highlighted today, so New York State, based on the Ever Student Succeed Act, designates in prior years, schools that are listed as targeted to support and improvement, and what used to be schools in good standing and not in good standing are on the watch list. We had two schools identified the prior two years for performance for certain subgroups, and we're excited because a lot of the work that we've been doing within our buildings, with our staff, we are having to report, we're no longer on any of those lists. We are listed as a local support and improvement, which is basically replacing good standing across New York State. So kudos to all of our staff and students and families for working through when, you know, we've had a lot we've gone through with the pandemic, and I think we're actually, well, our evidence is that we're doing better than a lot of the other schools because of the things we put in place. So we're proud of that.
Great, that's great news.
Mayor, could I comment? It's Mike Luffenshaw. I would be remiss if I just didn't take this opportunity. I know their presentation tonight's regarding the budget, but Dr. DeBarbury alluded to the level of cooperation and cooperativeness between the village and the school district, and I think the police department is at the forefront of that in many ways because of our SOLO program and our, clearly, this year has been a difficult one with the district and some of the things that have occurred in our community. And I don't think I need to allude to those, we all know what they are. But the level of communication and cooperation that I've had with Dr. DeBarbury, Dr. Davis, and the entire team there, I think speaks volumes to the relationship that's been built and their level of professionalism and care and concern for the people and the young people specifically in this community. And I can't say enough about that relationship and how much it's valued by us because if you look at the village and the population explosion that occurs during a school day on that campus, you've got Baker, you've got Derby, you've got Eldon, you've got the district office, staff, students, and parents, visitors, there's a lot of people concentrated right there, and a lot goes on. But they've done an exceptional job throughout this very difficult process, and there's really not, I mean, Dr. Davis called me two days ago at 7:30 in the morning, so there's not too much time, too many weeks to go by that I'm not in communication with them over some particular issue topic, and we're resolving issues. So it's great to work with them.
We want to thank, you know, the village, and we want to thank Chief Luffenshaw and his crew. You know, we couldn't do it without them. It's been a challenging few months. Joe has been phenomenal, our Board of Education, our staff, you know, everybody's worked together. But, you know, knowing that that security is on campus, just the change in, you know, just the culture of our world now, you know, the constant threats and things that we have to check out, we just can't, we don't have the capacity alone to do that. We need the help from you folks and from the police department, and he is correct, Chief is correct. We are in constant contact on every item so that there's no surprises. You know, I had a crew up there the other night because there was a suspicious person, and, you know, 7 o'clock at night, we had one of your crew over helping us out, looking at tapes. So, you know, thank you. You know, it's been teamwork for sure.
Anyone else have anything?
Thank you again. Don't forget to vote. Dr. DeBarbury, behind you.
I actually had several comments.
Oh, sure.
One is I--
For Dr. DeBarbury or for the board? Which are you, Sally?
The community. It's like, so I mentioned, as far as I know, according to the assessor's office, it's the school's choice to not accept the disability tax reduction. The town does, the village does, the school does not. My taxes have gone up almost a third for school. The school tax is greater than the town and village combined. Takes 1/12 of my income, actually more than that. So when I hear, "It's only $2 million, it's only $10 million," I'm offended because I almost lost my house because of school taxes. I don't think that's right. I know other people have lost their houses because of school taxes and the unwillingness to give a discount to anyone but a senior citizen. And I just didn't think that the village should be sacrificing its residents for the school for things that, you know, frankly, are quite luxurious.
Yeah. So one of the things I would say, we'd be happy to meet with you and talk more specifically. We can look at individual circumstances. I'll give you a scenario. I've been trying to do this with many of the other conversations we've had when we look at the school tax bill and, you know, what that really means to us. We have had an increase in the number of houses within this school community, so even though we're projecting the tax levy rate, or the tax levy increase, we have been under that projection, and it impacts everybody differently. But one of the things I will say, and we can have individual conversations if you'd like--
But I wanted it to be addressed, in a public--
Yeah, no, okay. And if you come to our public hearing on May 8th at the Transportation Center, we have a lot more detailed information in the presentation that will highlight the tax rate and what that means to our school community over time. And I can talk a little bit more about my own house. My assessment's gone up over the last year, $75,000. But when you look at the amount that I'm paying in school taxes this year compared to what I was paying five years ago, it's almost identical. So every situation's different, but even with that increase, I think it's important for people to go back and look, and we know everyone has certain circumstances that we're not aware of. I wasn't aware of the disability exemption. We can certainly look into that. I was aware of fire and veteran exemptions, but that is something that we'd be happy to talk more individually with you. So if you want to, again, break down my number, and Kim Viall, we'll set a time to meet with you.
And my understanding was you-- And my understanding was you were providing free lunches to the junior high and high school, is that still going on or has that been?
Free lunches during the COVID pandemic was for all students across the district. And New York State, I don't have all of the details yet, we're still waiting, but in the, the budget, there was some communication, it's not happening.
So you want $63 million for a swimming pool, et cetera, but you can't feed hungry kids?
Well, we're limited by, based on what we can from the state.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I understand. But that is something that the New York State School Council's superintendents, business officials, school boards, associations have all been advocating for. And we, we recognize that there's a need and we push with the federal government. The legislature, legislature this year in New York State was supportive of providing some free lunches for all students and breakfast. And unfortunately, that didn't make the final cut in the budget, so we will continue to advocate. And I know that there's some work with community eligibility and we might have some buildings that will take advantage of that because of our free reduced rate.
My child was one of the poor kids, her friends, or some of the poor kids. And I felt there was, there was unequal treatment based upon income.
Some of the things we've done to help with, you know, some of the, I don't want to say stereotypes that are associated are, is basically right now, any student that goes through the line, it says cashless. So whether you're a student who receives a free meal or you're a student who pays, it's all done through a punch code. So nobody knows, like you wouldn't know if I'm.
But if you're a high school student, you still need to eat. And if you don't have food at home.
Yeah. I would, I would say if we, if we know that there are students, we have supports in place to help those students get what they need.
All right.
Can you interrupt? This, you got to get back to village business. This conversation is one for the school board or district office.
And I will make sure that I have your, my number.
Is there anything else? If not, I want to thank all of you for coming this evening and helping us understand what you're doing. As chief pointed out, you're a huge part of our village.
We appreciate the support, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then I'm just, I've been having a little bit of a terrible mental.
I assume they're all going to exit. Do you want to wait? Want to wait a couple of minutes?
Stop up citizens' comments.
I like that.
We got one citizen here, right?
Moving on to trustees' comments. We'll start with, to the right.
I will stick with the agenda tonight.
I will stick with the agenda as well.
I haven't thought of anything, so I'm sticking to the agenda.
All right.
I will stick to the lengthy agenda as well.
I will also stick to the agenda.
Okay, that's good. Moving on to mayor's comments.
We won't stick to the agenda. Lot of, lot of stuff going on around the village that people, I want to make sure people are aware of. First of all, forgot to mention at the last board meeting, you reminded me afterwards, and we lost another great business citizen from the village with the death of Susie Crook. Her and her husband founded the bike reef some 50 years ago, right there where the timeless tattoo is. They're still going strong out on Van Buren Road. And unfortunately, Susie was that sick and did not, did not make it back to the last, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And she'd be missed, I just remember for years watching her run around. She was a cross-country tight runner and, and a great business person. So I, I did, I did talk to Dick Crook and, you know, they've been together for more than 50 years and quite a loss for Dick. Speaking of bicycles, there is a bike giveaway this weekend at Community Park at the Lions clubhouse from 10 to 2. So if you need a bike, get down to Community Park and see what they got on tap for you. I'm assuming they have quite a few of them and a nice chance to pick up a bike. The Christmas Bureau is also having a summer giveaway, June 3rd and June 5th. This will be a food type thing, non-perishable type foods that they will request that you donate, go to the Lysander Town Hall's where the volunteer center has offices now. And donate food items and also they're going to have some personal items, toothpaste, toothbrushes, to kind of get kids through, help get kids through the summer. If you go on our Facebook site, there's a, a link to this activity, sounds like a real nice thing. Just happened to be in the right position the other day to see that new sign on top of the amphitheater and with the sunshine, boy, did that look nice. So that was a, a great step for those who aren't aware of it. For years, it was fertilizer up there and now it says, "Bowl of the Storm." So, good job. Couple things in Chuck's territory. I got nervous the other day with all the rain we were getting and the flood warnings. Always worried about Tannery Creek and the bowling alley getting flooded and that type of stuff. But Chuck assured me we were in good shape the night that went down and checked anyways, just for something to do. And I think the project that we had, clean out Tannery Creek, and really made a big difference. Water was much lower than I expected to see it, wasn't crashing through there like it used to. And I could sleep better knowing we weren't going to have to get out and rescue the bowling alley. It was a nice send-off Friday up at the DPW for Skip Socia, our mechanic. Chuck and the crew put on a nice party for him and Skip's a great guy, I wish him all luck and fun in retirement. I did read the co-officer report, I don't know how many of you have taken the time to look at that, but you need to set aside some time. It's like reading a novel. This, this guy in, in two and a half weeks or whatever, has just cleaned out the village. I mean, he's done, he's been very active and has made some responses in areas that, you know, I was very glad to see he responded. I had called Chuck about something, I had seen an area that was, looked terrible with garbage and stuff all over. And so Chuck said, I'll, I'll mention something to Tim. Talked to Tim, Tim said, I've already sent a letter to the guy. I saw it the other day and he should be getting the letter today. So he's ahead of us. You should have received an email from Ruth Troy about the funding that the county is, is a warning for senior center. Chuck and I have been talking about this quite a bit, Chuck has been talking with Ruth, the engineer has been involved a little bit. Our parts, we can get up to $100,000 from the county to spend on the senior center. Now, I don't know if that means the towns can also get $100,000 independently, that's something we probably should look into quickly. But the two big projects that Chuck and Ruth have come up with is putting a new roof on the building and also looking at replacing or maybe combining some of the HVAC system. Right now, there are seven furnaces and air conditioner units over there because of that building being added on and added on and added on. And the thought would be maybe there's two or three furnaces that could be replaced by one and we'd make it much more efficient and save them money. So we are looking into that.
Is there a matching component to those grants?
What's that?
Is there a matching component to those grants?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because those are certain capital, under the agreed, capital things are town responsibility.
Yeah, and the Meals on Wheels is requested that we consider some changes in their kitchen under this grant. So we'll have to see, it would be nice to see if the three towns could also qualify because then we could maybe get everything done that needs to be done and not have to worry about the senior center for a while. Dates to mark on your calendar, Tuesday, nine o'clock, Tuesday, yeah, nine o'clock, but ninth is the beginning of the carp tournament. If you've never walked along, say, the trail going to Community Park and watched the carp fishermen, it's quite a, quite an interesting event. They love to talk to people because most of them are not from around here. It's an international type event, so feel free to walk down a long trail and, and ask them what they're doing. They'll explain how they set up the, they come up, they make balls out of corn and other stuff that throw, they throw it in and try to attract the carp to their area. And it's pretty scientific effort. I don't know if, I, I'm not sure if I heard that they mentioned that the date of the school vote is May 16th. And don't forget the Memorial Day Parade is May 30th. And one last thing, a reminder, people having events in their neighborhoods or any of our businesses that, that hire food trucks, food trucks have to be registered with the village, the same way our trash haulers are registered. It's not much of a process, come into Village Hall and get yourself signed up. And it just requires that there be, vehicles have been inspected, that type of stuff. If you saw what happened the other day where there was an explosion in one of the food trucks locally and somebody was, was injured with semi-severe burns, we'd like to know that they have insurance and that type of thing. So if you know people that are using food trucks for events, remind them that somebody involved in food truck has got to register that with the village. And other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Moving on to department heads, we'll start off with our attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda.
I'm going to stick to the agenda, but since Ruth is not here, she left a couple notes. May is Older Americans Month, there are many special events at Canton Woods and the community. Please look for Canton Woods newsletter and additional information on the Village of Balansville website. Two events to mention, on May 10th at 10:30, come by for a Mother's Day treat giveaway followed by a concert by George Lahey at 11 o'clock. And on Wednesday, May 17th, from 1 to 3, Canton Woods Annual Health and Wellness Event, plenty of local vendors with resource materials and fun giveaways, and it's, everyone is welcome. That's all.
Moving on to our treasurer.
Okay, just a couple of things. First of all, I want to wish trustee Stubbins a happy birthday. Secondly, the investment policy is still being reviewed. It's being reviewed at NICON now, so it's, it's just taking longer than I thought with the reviews. And we did not get back from the first one I talked about last meeting until late last week. And then, and one of their comments was, send it to NICON. So I sent it to NICON and it's still at NICON. So I will tell you though, just as an aside, in just the standard interest rate environment that we're in now, our savings made $10,000 last month. An investment policy will probably double that. So it's not going to happen every month because our fund balance declines during the year. But it is, it's a good place for us to get to and, and will help the village a lot. You heard, when I asked the question, Dr. DeBarbury or Ken Viall talked about fund management plan. That's what I talked about at the last meeting also, that we need to get to, that's the place that we need to get to. So it comes from a strategic plan, a capital replacement plan, some metrics on safety and soundness of the village in the event of economic downturns or, you know, catastrophic financial need for whatever reasons, sewer failure, water failure, those kind of things. And those things come together and then we get from that where we need to be fund balance-wise and we develop a fund plan to get to that. You can see what they're doing, they're, they put together, they established another capital reserve and they don't fund that all in one year. They manage their budget and are able to pull money out of that every year to start, you know, populating that fund. And that's kind of, that's kind of what we have to get to with some, some, a, a vision on the horizon of where we have to get to, not just, hey, we're putting some money away and then the next time we need something, we spend it. So, and that's, that's what always happens, but that's kind of what happens if you don't have a plan. So anyway, and lastly, I won't be at the next meeting, I am going to be out of town. So I will be here all the way until the day of that meeting and I'm leaving that day. So I'll be gone for like a week. But I'll, I'll leave my duties to the other check signers in the, in the organization. Thanks.
That brings us to you.
Code, are we on Code or to me?
Give me Code or you.
Okay. You saw the report that, I'm sorry, you saw the report that the Code officer gave you, he's in the office Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. I mean, it's not Mondays and Fridays. So he's been really hitting the ground running and that's been going very well. DPW, best season, we're going to be going to our summer schedule now, we're going to be out for a couple of weeks. And then the schedules, anybody has a question, the schedule's on the, on the internet, on the webpage. The Village Hall, we started our repairing the soffits and what have you. We've run into some other issues which we, we thought we would. We have that bond money that we can use and we're going to be using a little bit of the, the bond money for that also, for the gutters, the soffits and some of the painting. And we just want to let the board know that, that we do have the money for that and we may be dipping into that a little bit. The parks are all open now, the bathrooms are open in all the parks, the kayak launches are in both parks. We probably won't get the docks in this next week, the river's just high. You know, it's just too high for us to, too high, moving too fast for us to get across the river.
How's that open, is it?
No, but we, I think they're open the 18th, I talked to them the other day. But we try to get them in early if we can and normally we can, but we're glad we didn't because the water's really high now, so we'll have to wait for that. Other than that, those just questions? Oar mechanic started today, thrilled, got somebody in there. Skip Socia's a tough one to replace and he's going to come in and spend five days with him to get him, back him in and hopefully get his, get it in gear. But so far, it's gone well enough, thrilled to get him in here. Now we have to start looking for a replacement for Luis. There's going to be a tough battle.
Okay, soon as the chief gives the mic, bring us up to speed.
Yes, just a couple of things. On Tuesday, myself and Sergeant Gwynne accompanied Officer Zach McCallum to Albany. Zach received a recognition of excellence award from the New York State Mothers Against Drunk Driving and New York State Stop DWI for his diligence and work in, his, his aggressive enforcement of DWI laws in 2022. And Zach did a really good job, he made 30 DWI arrests last year. I just looked at the fourth, the first quarter stats as a department, we had 26. To give you some frame of reference, that's more than any other town or village agency in this county. It's only one less than the city of Syracuse made. So between Officer McCallum and our new officer that we hired from Virginia, Officer Joe Sarah, those two are aggressively looking for people that are driving drunk. Clearly, those people exist because they're finding them and, which concerns me that in this day of, of ride sharing and Uber and Lyft and, and other entities such as that, that people are still driving a vehicle in intoxicated condition when they don't have to and that they can get a ride home for a fairly reasonable amount of money, much less than the cost of a DWI or the shattered lives of.
Most of these occur in the late overnight or is it almost any time of day?
Well, it's, it's almost any time of day because we've had several drywall intoxication, drywall building impaired by drug arrests. But to give you a point of reference, Officer McCallum works 311.
Okay.
So he, he works 311, he does work some stop DWI shifts, and Officer Sarah works the midnight shift. But, you know, Zach works 311. So many of these arrests are during his shift, during that 311 time period. So, you know, I did have a business owner, we'll go nameless, in a discussion with them, asked me if these traffic stops and arrests were going to continue and I informed this individual that they were, that I had little to no sympathy for, for these individuals, especially considering that my brother was killed a number of years ago by a drug driver when he was operating a tow truck in North Carolina. So he was kind of talking to the wrong person and that person.
And that person that I was speaking to understood what I had to say and we went about our, our conversation. So I'm very pleased that he was recognized. It was quite a ceremony, there were, there were officers from all across the state. It lasted three hours with a luncheon in there, so it was very nice. So I got to be invited. His wife, who's due, I think, the 25th of this month with her second child, also attended and his commanding officer, that's why Sergeant Gwynne, went as well. So it was very nice, I was very glad to be there, proud to represent the village and things. And I also will not be at the next board meeting, I'll be attending the National Command Course of the FBI that I made mention of a few weeks ago. And Lieutenant Lockwood, I'm sure, will fill in capably for me. So Lester's questions, I have nothing further.
No, but we appreciate the work your officers are doing on keeping the streets safe.
I will pass that along.
Second one.
New business? None. Old business? None, nothing pending. Did we audit bills?
Yes, we did.
Could I have a motion to pay bills is audited?
Move.
Second, I guess.
Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
We have to vote on the motion to pay bills.
You only had a second.
Aye.
Me too. Then could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I will make that motion.
Second.
At 8:22.
8:23.
All in favor? O's carried.